I don't see his phone number up there.
That's correct.
Okay, um, well, if, if, if someone could help remind me if he becomes present that we get back, we backtrack to that. Uh, thank you. And, uh, Mayor Pellchat in the city of South Lion as well is present. Thank you. We'll move on. Twenty twenty-one. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead, sorry.
First off, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, when you turn your head, we can't, we can't hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, so it, uh, it drops right out. So, uh, I'll, I'll move the, uh, the minutes for, uh, the council meeting on March first of twenty twenty-one.
Councilmember Kittle.
All support. I also have a comment.
Um, is there any further discussion before we go to Councilmember Kittle? All right, go ahead, Councilmember.
Uh, simply matter, uh, on page five, about halfway down, it says Kibble stated he was hoping that they could, it says flush and it should say flesh out the problem. That's all I had. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor to move the March first twenty twenty-one minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passes. Move on to the March eighth twenty twenty-one, um, council minutes. Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I'll move the minutes.
I'll second, but I have a comment.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
On, uh, page three, Lisa, um, it reads Sergeant Baki. It's, it should read Lieutenant Baki. In two locations on that page, top paragraph.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? All those in favor to move the minutes from March eighth twenty twenty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passes. And finally, uh, approval of city council minutes from March eleventh twenty twenty-one. Councilmember Dill.
I'll move the minutes from March eleventh.
I'll second with a comment.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Well, I can go after Steve if you'd like.
Okay, that's fine. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Lisa, on page four, about two-thirds of the way down, we're talking about the, uh, the ladder truck. Uh, I made the statement that the, uh, the ladder truck has been used for fighting fires. It isn't, and the word only should be in there. It isn't only for multi-story fires. You would add the word only. I'm all set. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second to pass the minutes from March eleventh twenty twenty-one. All those in favor, please say aye.
I had my comment.
I apologize.
No problem. Uh, lower down on that, that same page, uh, at toward the bottom, it says, Councilman Kibble stated ignition standards have changed and it's actually emissions standards have changed. Oh, yeah.
So we have a motion in a second to now pass the March eleventh twenty twenty-one. City council minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passes. Move on to the approval of the agenda this evening. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll move the agenda.
All support.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion on the agenda this evening? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. We'll move on to public comment this evening. I'd like to remind everyone that there is a two-minute time limit and to please remember to state your name and address. I do know that we have granted permission for a longer public comment this evening, uh, for a group. City Clerk Deaton, do we have anyone else that's looking to participate, um, in public comment? If so, I'd like to put them in front.
We do not.
Okay. Um, if you could, please maybe identify the group and let them know that they are, the floor is theirs.
I have a S. Santana. She's now allowed to speak.
Okay, great.
Alrighty, this is, uh, my first go at it in this format. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. Um, well, uh, lucky you for having a light agenda and, and thank you for giving me a little bit of extra time to, uh, address something that I, I think is a concern, not just for myself and my neighbors, but, uh, for the city as a whole. Um, I've, uh, prepared something that I'm just gonna read from so that I can stay on script and not, uh, kind of ramble, so please forgive me. It's, it's slightly long. I'm sorry, Ms. Deaton, go ahead.
Um, could I get your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Sophia Santana, S.O.F.I.A. Santana is S.A.N.T.A.N.A. And I am at two six five six six Pontiac Trail, uh, South Lion, obviously.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I want to extend a additional thank you to Mr. Zellinak for, uh, uh, helping set this up and giving me some extra time and public comment. Okay, so, um, I just, good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear out my concerns. I've lived in South Lion for almost five years now, and I love it here. Uh, I want to make clear that my comments are not intended to convey a lack of sensitivity to the issues facing our rapidly aging population. If anything, I think it's a beautiful thing to see neighboring municipalities embracing new senior-oriented housing developments, uh, including the one we're gonna have at Pontiac Trail in Eight Mile. In the same vein, the concept of adult foster care, AFC for short, is an idea that I think sounds wonderful on paper, to be able to move a senior into a family-like environment versus a large facility. But as in every industry, there will be entities that excel, those that do okay by meeting minimum standards, and others that raise serious questions as to how authorities allow them to remain operational. The problem in my little corner of town started about a year ago. We have three houses on our quaint, quiet enclave that is comparable to a standalone cul-de-sac. Uh, I am on six acres. My closest neighbor has three acres, and the third house has one acre. The third house went into foreclosure and was snapped up by an LLC in March twenty twenty. Uh, we didn't know the owners were an LLC at the time because the husband and wife team were a bit standoffish and told us they were moving in from Heartland. Um, of course, we wanted to be respectful. We didn't ask questions. Um, but after several months of seeing contractors come and go and nobody moving in, we began to wonder what was going on. In September twenty twenty, Susie's Bar along Pontiac Trail hosted what was supposed to be a private streetcar meetup. Um, things got out of hand because the thing went viral and wound up with, I, I would say two hundred and fifty, uh, streetcar racers, including a couple who were drag racing up and down Pontiac Trail. So, uh, myself and my neighbors, we kind of rushed to the end of our driveway to see what was going on, thinking there was a car accident. In the midst of this chaotic situation, the LLC owner showed up. It appeared that they had a guest in their backseat, like they were gonna give a tour to this, this house that they just bought. And, uh, she was forced to come clean, and she told us that the house was slated to become a senior home. So after realizing we had been lied to, that just kind of made us, uh, start doing our homework and research to figure out what we were dealing with. So, uh, that brings us to what we've learned. Um, and actually, I should say, it raised more questions. We hope to do some research to find some comfort, and what we found was actually not that bad. It was worse. The Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, known as LARA, oversees licensing of nursing homes and senior group homes. There are several categories. The proposed license for two six six five oh Pontiac Trail would be an adult foster care group home for up to six residents. The AFCs require twenty-four-seven staffing, uh, one staffer for up to, up to five residents, two if you go up to six. For my small piece for enclave that sees minimal vehicular and pedestrian traffic, this would mean a new normal of at minimum three vehicles pertaining to twenty-four-seven shift workers, vehicles associated with family visitors, four vehicles associated with the primary owners and their main assistants, and medical transport vehicles. Uh, the increased traffic coupled with the transient and high turnover rate of traditional home health, home health workers, uh, who don't get nearly enough pay and praise as they deserve, uh, would significantly alter my way of living and that of my neighbors. We spend the majority of our time outdoors with our dogs, gardening and maintaining our properties. Uh, my neighbors and I purchased our properties for the privacy and safety afforded by being on a private driveway. And to preempt the future question, it's going to be a straight-up no from me if somebody attempts to apply for zoning variance for signage marking the private driveway or for commercial signage, uh, for the group home. So that's the micro view in a nutshell, just the country bumpkin side of the situation shared by my neighbor and myself. The bigger picture is especially concerning. We have a problem as a community and should all take personal offense that an LLC with a flawed record is attempting to sneak its operation into South Lion. I would like to direct a question to the council and any city officials listening, and I understand you probably can't, uh, respond until later. Um, has LARA met its statutory obligation to give the city at least forty-five days' notice of a potential new AFC license in our city? In reviewing case law on the matter, is it, it is apparent LARA officials have a history of not informing municipal officials. Up until two thousand and six, the statutory notice would have then been followed by city officials having to notify neighbor, neighboring property owners of the, of the, uh, proposed facility. The Michigan Supreme Court struck down that measure because it was viewed as violating the Federal Fair Housing Act, uh, which prohibits housing discrimination among a number of classes of individuals, including those with mental disabilities such as seniors with dementia or Alzheimer's. And while that seems appropriate, it's, the decision also had the unfortunate effect of eliminating the rights of neighboring property owners to have any say in the decision process regarding AFC licenses. Property owners get more notice regarding zoning variances than we do about AFC facilities. I'm not quite sure how the residents of Carriage Trace, whose backyard's abut two six six five oh Pontiac Trail, might react if they were to find an elderly person in distress in their backyard. I don't think they know what's going on. Uh, finally, this brings us to the PowerPoint slide I submitted to City Hall to, uh, to accompany my comments. Uh, the COVID pandemic has exposed the flaws and failures of our state government in, uh, protecting our seniors. Um, unfortunately, it's become a politicized issue. I don't agree with that. Um, I think these issues happened, uh, before the governorship, uh, changed hands, so it shouldn't be politicized. Um, however, uh, in recent years, civil challenges to the Fair Housing Act have proven to be largely unsuccessful, leaving us at the mercy of the discretion of LARA officials charged with approving licenses in areas they know little about. So that brings us to slide two, the basics. Um, I think our biggest emergency concern shared by myself and my neighbor is that we have a gravel driveway that has been and will continue to be a hazard to the uninitiated. Um, that's how I like to refer to it. Um, my neighbors and I can handle it with our larger vehicles, but I can't imagine the pain and discomfort a senior would feel having to endure the massive potholes, not to mention the difficulties normal emergency vehicles would have, especially during the winter months. Um, and I, I did send in a video showing, um, myself, and I'm a pretty skilled driver, and I had trouble getting down the driveway after the last major storm when we got hit with eight inches. Um, so, yeah. Uh, the next slide is the city authority and options. I again want to say that I appreciate City Hall and, and how you guys have taken the time to listen and try to figure this out with us. Um, I only added that slide just to identify the, uh, particular provisions in the Michigan State law that kind of show that you guys have authority to, um, start a discussion with LARA. Oddly enough, property owners no longer have that statutory, uh, statutory right, per se. Uh, also with the, uh, with the slides, lastly, I included contact information for the licensed social worker charged with reviewing the, uh, LLC's license application, and I included contact information for the, uh, regional supervisor who's charged with getting final approval. Um, and here's where it gets even more interesting. If I could, uh, just take a little bit more of your time. I know this is a lot of information. Uh, since my neighbor and I penned a joint letter to LARA and, uh, city officials in November, we've learned, uh, quite a bit more about the system and some more about this company. The LLC that owns two six six five oh Pontiac Trail routinely solicits job applications via Facebook versus using resources better suited to finding skilled workers. Uh, there is mounting evidence the LLC has a facility in Milford that is operating without a license. This facility houses up to fifteen seniors. Per a twenty nineteen online series compiled by volunteer journalists and investigators, the LLC in question has ties to what appears to be a potentially corrupt system of business entities and attorneys who specialize in obtaining conservatorships and guardianship authority over seniors who are then forcibly placed in group homes while their assets are sold off to cover the cost of their care. Profits then get funneled to the attorneys and others. This investigation specifically identified the LLC as housing at least one of these alleged, alleged victims. Uh, overall, the findings published on a website called www dot the daily cause, K-O-S dot com, alleges there are potentially three thousand seniors caught up in this nightmare in Oakland County. In the past couple of years, LARA has shut down one AFC in our area, but this was only after Michigan State Police initiated a criminal investigation at the behest of a, uh, concerned family member who had a patient in this facility. Uh, this was in Genoa Township in February twenty twenty, and it appears to be a case of an owner who had an addiction to prescription pills and was stealing the pills from seniors and writing free prescriptions. In another case, and this is a good one, um, oh, not a good one, but interesting. From August twenty nineteen, a manager at an AFC in Lion Township close to our city border was dinged by LARA for giving tranquilizers and other controlled substances left over from seniors who had passed away. He was giving them to current residents. Um, this manager was not an actor. LARA noted the violations in a report. A few months later, it approved a new license for the same facility with the manager listed as the new owner. The aforementioned examples unfortunately are the norm. LARA will cite violations in their inspection reports and only requires as a remedy a written response from the AFC operators as to how they will note, how they will rectify the situation. There is no further follow-up beyond that. The fact that violations are cited during inspections is of particular value because most of these inspections are done with advance notice. So consider, if your average citizen gets caught shoplifting, not that big of a deal. But if, uh, if an off-duty cop gets caught shoplifting, it's a big deal because the cops should know better, and they should be held to a higher standard. So I'm of the opinion that we should view violations cited against AFC facilities in the same way. A violation is not just simply an administrative slap on the wrist when it is committed by people who not only should know better, but who are entrusted with the care of some of the most, most vulnerable members of our society. With that said, the LLC that wants to operate at two six six five oh Pontiac Trail has a lengthy history of health code violations at its Milford facility, violations regarding the handling of controlled substance medications at its Novi and Highland facilities, violations of substandard sanitary conditions at its Highland and Milford facilities, and even an allegation of neglect posted as a review on its Facebook page by a disgruntled employee. This former employee apparently did not receive proper train, proper training to know that by law she had a statutory obligation to report such abuse to adult protective services. Lastly, to again go back to how locals know their area best, two six six five oh Pontiac Trail is not equipped with central air conditioning. My former neighbor, who's great to have as a neighbor, suffered at times during the summer and fall because it got so hot in his house and his small windows cannot accommodate a standard window air conditioner unit. His solution was to just go out for the evening when it was really hot, or he'd hang out, he'd hang out in his garage with his door open, even sleeping there at night. He, he lived by himself, so he could do that. Um, how on earth this house will be a comfortable environment for seniors, some of whom are anticipated to be dementia and Alzheimer's patients who will not be able to articulate this, their discomfort, is beyond me. I hope we can prevent a tragedy here by strongly encouraging state officials to thoroughly evaluate the appropriateness of this house's properties and its overall location for an AFC as required by the state's Adult Foster Care Act. Um, I know that was really long. I appreciate your guys' patience in listening to me and, and hearing out my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. I, I am gonna ask that council, please, uh, withhold any comments until there are council comments at the end of tonight's meeting. Um, that was a little lengthy, so I did want to give, uh, City Clerk Deaton another chance to see if anyone else had stood up for public comment at this time.
No, they have not.
Okay, well, they had time to do that, so we will close public comment. We'll move on to the discussion of downtown with our DDA Director Nate Mack.
Thank you, Mayor Pellchat. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, last week, I sent out the applications for the Restaurant Relief Program to the county. Um, as of today, I've received two applications back from restaurants requesting to receive funds, and I've received quite a bit of interest from our, uh, restaurants, bars, and cafes for that, so hopefully we'll be able to get that money dispersed to them. Uh, just so you're aware, we have to have it all, uh, allocated to the businesses by June thirtieth. So there are some businesses that are still doing work, and part of the grant requirements is you have to have those paid in full before you can submit for the reimbursement, so I've just informed them to submit their receipts to me when they're completed with the work. Uh, the Lion Area Task Force has been working on another survey to send out to businesses. Uh, we're gonna get that out this week, and it's gonna be used to kind of help guide our future activities and kind of see where businesses are at, uh, one year from the COVID pandemic. Uh, this Friday is the Michigan Downtown Association Spring Conference. I'll be attending that. Um, that will fulfill the requirement for the historic preservation aspect of the, uh, Michigan Downtown Certified Professional Program. Uh, last week, we also received a, uh, drawing, but not a complete submission for one oh six South Lafayette Street, otherwise known as the Draft Street Building. Uh, the owners changed the space from not a restaurant specifically, but to like a white box retail space. So they indicated that they'd be open to either a retail restaurant coming in there or some sort of restaurant, or sorry, a retail business or a restaurant to coming into that space. So they're basically just kind of opening up their options to see what, what type of interest is out there. And then this week, we're hoping to have the three sanitation stations delivered as well from Oakland County. So that's my report for the evening. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Nate. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy, you go ahead.
Nate, did, uh, did we, uh, did the Lake Street Tavern take us up on that other greenhouse? And, and if so, did we get it installed yet?
Uh, they were waiting. There was some work that was being done in the parking lot. They were waiting to have that completed, and so they're still interested in it. I talked to, I talked to them, uh, at the end of last week, and they said they're gonna be submitting a drawing, so I'm just waiting for that drawing still so that we can get it out.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Yep.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Well, I, for one, am excited about one oh six. Um, I, obviously, I think everybody was hoping a restaurant would end up being a natural fit. Um, at the same time, if someone can end up finding something to sell goods there, I'm all for it. Having something that's an active, uh, revenue generator rather than just sitting idle is, in my book, a, a win, so. I'm glad, just glad to hear this news.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Kittle. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Nate, I was over at, uh, talking with Duke today for the, uh, plants that, um, that, that I ordered for, uh, Paul Baker Park. Yeah, you haven't been, you haven't placed your order yet. Um, so I just want to let you know, he's got plant material coming in this week, and, um, you may want to maybe contact him tomorrow. He did have some really nice recommendations, so I looked at the book because he's got a catalog. It's a new catalog this year. Uh, so I just want to make sure that the downtown gets their flowers, so.
Yeah, yep, we, uh, we're gonna get those baskets to him soon. Um, I've been, I've been talking with, uh, Ron and Doug at, at DPW, and, and we're gonna get the baskets and then, uh, the additional ones that you, you ordered as well, so.
Well, here's the thing. Uh, the baskets are already over at, at, uh, Donahue's. They're already there. He just needs you to call him and tell him how many baskets and what kind of plants you want in the baskets. That's what he's waiting for.
Okay.
Um, I've already placed my order for Paul Baker Park. I, I gotta get moving. I, you know, I can't wait for the city right now. It's growing. It's the growing season. These greenhouses are growing things now, and in order to get them at a certain level by the time you put them up, I mean, you, you need to get your orders in, so. You may want to call Duke tomorrow. Uh, he does have some recommendations of what he thinks would look good in the downtown area. Uh, he just needs a number from you. I've already done Paul Baker Park. That's on a separate order.
Okay. Yep.
So I want to get, thank you.
Yep, I'll call him tomorrow.
Great.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have two things, one for you, one for Nate. Um, I believe that Councilmember Richards has joined us, so if we want to call on him.
Thank you.
And then, uh, Nate, I have a question in regards to the flowers as well. Last year, there was a question about the flowers at the monument, whether or not those belong to the city or not. And I'm, would like to recommend that we, uh, make those flowers match the city. There's two, I think, two flower pots that sit in front of the monument. I know it's outside of the DDA, but I'd like the city to consider adding two baskets to the bill and adding them there to keep it all, uh, transparent, looking the same.
We will look at that, yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Well, you know, Nate, you know what you could do? Um, he, you know, I was over at the greenhouse, so I saw that his plant material. You can either increase the order of plants that you're gonna put in the downtown area, or the DDA also has, um, geraniums that are, uh, in the corners of the downtown area, beautiful geranium baskets. You know, I guess that's what the DDA has always done. Uh, that would be another option if you or the DDA felt that it would be appropriate, but, you know, two, two pots of plants isn't gonna make, isn't gonna break the bank, that's for sure. But you've got some options. You can either
Okay.
match with what is going, hanging from the baskets in the downtown area, or just go with straight, uh, red geraniums. I saw the geraniums. They're, they're looking really good, so.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Does anyone else have anything for Nate this evening? Okay, thanks a lot, Nate. Appreciate that update.
Yep.
Uh, before we move on to the Fire Chief Report, uh, Councilmember Richards, could you, um, let us know that you are present here and where you are located for tonight's meeting?
He's muted.
Yeah, you may be muted over there, Councilmember.
Sorry, sir. Okay, unmuted.
Yes, we got you now.
Okay, I'm here. I'm, I'm present in South Lion. Uh, I've joined the meeting about, uh, eight minutes after opening at seven thirty, so it was about seven thirty-eight.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Richards. We'll now head over to the Fire, Fire Chief Report with Chief Vogel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Um, your fire department was very busy today. We spent a couple hours in Colonial Acres. They had a significant gas leak, which caused a lot of havoc. Um, I will be meeting with the city manager tomorrow and see if we want to try to do some cost recovery. The contractor hit the main feed with the boring machine, and it was marked, and they still got it pretty good, so. Uh, back a couple years ago when it was happening in Trotters, we did some cost recovery. Um, I think we should probably do it again. We were there for two hours. Um, we also had multiple other calls to the point where we had to use a ladder truck for medical today. We were so busy. I thought that was interesting. Um, speaking of the ladder, uh, I've spoken to the vendor, addressing a couple of the concerns that we've had. Um, they're going to fly out at their cost, um, we're and his team to go to the factory. They also promised that we will have a truck, a demo truck, and the first stop's gonna be South Lion, and I'm gonna invite everybody from council to come and play with the truck. That should be in May. So more to come, and that's all I have.
That's great, Chief. I'm sure you had a very busy day over there. Um, does anyone have anything for Chief on that? Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Will we be allowed to ring the bell?
Yeah, I've been told we can do, have a, have it all day, so, and they're gonna send out an engineer. So if we have any engineer questions, um, we're all gonna be able to go up in it, drive it, so I'm pretty excited.
This is a rig that's, uh, geared like ours will be?
It'll be the exact truck, except It'll be the exact truck, except it probably won't fit in a station because it's going to be the tall one.
Okay.
So it should be almost the same, besides the height.
All right, great, Chief. Thanks for the update. Have a great rest of your night.
Thank you.
We'll move on over to the Police Chief Report and Chief Sobek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going to be back. A couple of things for you. You guys should have each received a South Lion mask in your council packets. And Councilmembers Dill and Kurzweil, you should have received a Pigs for Wigs t-shirt for your generous donation to the Kids for Wigs in last November. I'm sorry about the sizes. I couldn't get them any smaller, but if you find two trees, you can maybe use it as a hammock in the summer. So I wanted to mention that. Thank you for your donations for that. We're still headed into the accreditation process. We're very knee deep in it and it's very extensive, but we're going to come out as a better police department overall as far as transparency and practices. We're adding new policies all the time. So that's been a very good process for us. I just recently received a couple of applications for the South Lion cruising events this year and the Motor Fest. I received them today. So I'll be reviewing them in the next couple of days. And one final thing, as far as our phones, it's like an ever, ever learning process. Apparently, we need some more communication devices between the South Lion Police and Fire Building. So we're looking at a target date anywhere between April 5th to 19th, and don't hold me to it, but hopefully we're looking at getting that going soon. So other than that, it's good to be back.
Yeah, that's, that's great, Chief. Great to have you back. I saw a couple of hands go up. Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for my shirt, and it makes a very good sleep shirt. It is huge.
I recommend that too, but I didn't want to get, you know, too much information.
Well, I appreciate that mask, and I got one from the Fire Chief, so I can swap those out so I can represent. Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Two things. Chris, can you sort of tell everybody what this organization is? And second of all, on the back of the shirt, just wanted to let you know that the Lake Village logo that's on the back of the church, on the back of the shirt, my husband designed that logo for Lake Village years ago, and we were surprised to see that it's still in use, so.
Basically, the Kids for Wigs is, it's kind of like, it's an organization nonprofit for, and what we'll do is we'll, we actually participate in the No Shave November. So if the officers don't want to shave and grow the facial hair, they make a donation of at least $50. And all of the proceeds goes toward wigs for kids with certain ailments and diseases that they're unable to either grow hair or they've lost their hair. So just kind of reassures them of their self-confidence and gives them some self-esteem and just, you know, some of the letters that we get and the photos of our sponsors. It's just really kind of, it really is moving, and we're glad that we're actually a part of it. We've been doing it for three or four years now, and we will continue to do that. So that's what the Kids for Wigs organization is.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I was curious, who is it that's coming up with these new things that are necessary to get the system to run?
Well, it's a combination of our IT company and Comcast. Like I said before, this, this really hasn't been a very smooth process with Comcast. I know, I know from firsthand from having it at my home that the service is phenomenal. It works great. It's very reliable. It very rarely ever goes down. But the process, it seems like sometimes the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing. And so trying to get their, you know, their project manager, their salesperson, our IT company on the same page at one time, plus the staffing from our agencies. There's just been, it's been, I guess, a little bit of lack of communication. So as we get closer to this thing, we're learning, there's a couple of things that will work and things that will not work. So fortunately, it's not going to cost us any more monthly. It's going to cost us a little bit more money to have some of these, to purchase some of these communication devices between the South Lion Police and Fire Building. So and that's, I think it's very minimal, but I think once we're up and running, we're going to be pretty happy with the product.
I think that that's, that's probably true. And I, this is kind of a, a story that I've heard often, that Comcast is very difficult to get things completed, but once they're up and running, it's a very reliable system. And I think that's helpful. I, I'm just kind of concerned. I just hope you guys aren't getting to a position where something might end up falling through a crack because you don't have the, the system that you need to be able to rely on now.
You know, our, you know, actually the liaison for the Police Department, our administrative assistant, Brianna, she's on top of things. So she's not going to.
She's very good at what she does.
Yes, not going to let things slide through. So, you know, Paul, we're on a, we'll be having like a Zoom conference. Paul says, are you getting all this? I'm like, well, not exactly, but I know Brianna is. So it's good to have some people that really know. So we rely on.
To have those reliable folk, yeah.
Now, we, we actually do have Comcast Internet right now. We dropped while we do have Comcast Internet that is hooked up and no issues. It's fairly quickly. So we're pretty pleased with that, with that so far.
Well, that's good. Yeah, thank you very much. And I didn't get a mask, so I would like to get one.
You did not?
I did not, no.
Oh, I apologize. I will get one tomorrow.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Chief. Anyone got anything else for Chief tonight? All right, thanks, Chief.
Yep.
We have no unfinished business this evening, so we'll move on to new business. Number one, purchase and installation of an induced draft aerator for the water treatment plant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. We have an induced draft aerator at the water treatment plant that has failed and in need of replacement. It's a planned purchase that can be purchased from Capital Improvement Account, 592-556.970. The West Tech unit is a like replacement for the, for this unit, including our representative for that would be $62,997. I've attached the quotes for the three different IDAs and that I went out to bid for and the announcement for the demo and installation of the induced draft aerator. The removal and installation was advertised to five local contractors with some assistance from our engineers, Huber Roth and Clark. Only one contractor responded and furnished a proposal in accordance with this job announcement. I have included in front of you the proposal by Titus, the announcement for the IDA replacement, the total for the labor and materials by Titus would be $31,800. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Doug. Councilmember Kennedy, I saw your hand go up earlier. Go ahead.
We, we've already talked about this. I'd like to just go ahead and make the, the motion to approve the purchase and installation of the induced draft aerator for the water plant for the amount of $94,797, underlined item 592-557-970. Just, and I do have a question after you get a second on that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
I'll support that.
Okay, Councilmember Kurzweil, I saw your hand go up. Did you have anything to add to the discussion?
Yes, what I wanted to know, I just want to make sure I understand it, is that what the aerator does is that it, it takes dissolved solids and oxidizes them so that they can be easily removed through the filtration process. Is that my, is that the correct understanding?
You are 100% correct. That is exactly what it does. It has a little blower on it that kicks on. It's at the head of the plant. So it's the entrance works. It's where basically all the water from the ground comes to the plant. That's the very first thing it goes through is the induced draft aerator. That helps to, the oxidation process there helps to put this iron in suspension. And then downstream from there, we remove it with the horizontal pressure filters. So that's exactly correct.
So basically, what this, so basically what this is, the, the the mineral in the water that needs to be oxidized is predominantly iron. Is that?
Correct.
Okay, but there are other solids. There are other solids.
You get others with it.
Okay, got it.
Yes, definitely.
And the, and the whole.
Mostly iron, though. If we didn't have it, we'd have a lot of iron if we didn't have the IDAs online. And we have two that work, one that was replaced within the last 10 years. So this one on the southeast corner of that building is the smallest of the three units. And that, that we'd like to have working now that we have the new water line, dedicated water line.
I'm a little bit familiar with the oxidation of iron. I just, I had to do some research on it. I didn't realize that the aerator actually facilitated that process. So in other words, the end product, when you use these aerators, is to have a much better quality of your drinking water.
That is correct. Without chemical addition. That's the ideal situation. You don't want to try to add any more than what we have to. We bring it into suspension and then the, the actual horizontal pressure filters do the, I guess, where the rubber meets the road, they do the work of making the iron attach and then we pull it out.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. You've been very informative.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy, yep, go ahead.
Doug, I want to thank you for reiterating the information you gave us a few months ago. Also, I'd like to just know what the target date for installation is on that.
I have good news on that. Actually, the, hopefully it will be less than the time they anticipated. So West Tech, I've been in contact with West Tech and Tonka and the other people. There's actually three, three different IDAs here. So I think we can get this thing hopefully in less than 20 weeks, they're telling me, after we get approval from you guys. And then I got to do a little communication, which I've already been in with Eagle for, because it's a like-for-like replacement. They said it shouldn't be an issue already. I've talked with the engineer at Eagle. So I think we're going to be all set to hopefully have this done maybe in and around the same time the other end of the building is getting the horizontal pressure filters.
That is absolutely good news. We got a motion in a second. Let's get this guy his votes so we can get this thing ordered.
We, we do have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton. Is there any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Dill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. New business number two this evening, state of emergency.
We're bringing for you this evening a resolution declaring a local state of emergency due to COVID-19. In October, the city of South Lion declared a state of emergency to protect the peace, health, safety and general welfare of its residents due to COVID-19. Part of the declaration allowed the city to hold its virtual meetings. Tonight, I am bringing before you another resolution to actually extend that until August 31st. We feel it's appropriate to shorten the timeframe of this emergency. City Council can make that decision at a later date by declaring the state of emergency until August 31st. So it will allow us to continue with the methods we have to protect staff, boards and residents through August without having to come back numerous times or on a monthly basis. I'm recommending that the city declare a state of emergency in order to authorize the Police Chief, Mayor and our city manager to take whatever emergency measures are necessary to address the COVID-19 public health crisis. I tapped information regarding Act 390, declaring that local state of emergency. And tonight, you can either approve or not approve the resolution declaring a local state of emergency for city of South Lion.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would actually like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the resolution declaring local state of emergency to protect peace, health, safety and general welfare of our community.
Councilmember Dill?
I'll support.
We have a motion by Councilmember Walton, supported by Councilmember Dill. Do we have any further discussion on this? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Pellchat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We move on to new business number three this evening, charter amendments.
City of South Lion has previously discussed the potential to make charter amendments to address city, address issues pertaining to quorum requirements, notices, special meetings, nominations, potential conflicts of interest and between state law and charter. Additionally, fill in the vacancy on city council. Last November, we placed on the ballot and related to our quorum requirement. Tonight, the correspondence from our city attorney outlined the potential charter amendments that could possibly be placed on the ballot this coming November and the process for doing so. Tonight, we'd like to set direction as to what you would like to address in any ballot question or address the process for moving forward. Discussion needs to be had regarding which charter amendments we'd like to have for the November 21st election. Several of those are mentioned within your document from our city attorney.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Attorney Hamamay, you know, we previously discussed the filling of vacancy on the city council. Is there a reason we didn't move forward with drafting the charter on that?
We didn't draft anything yet.
Okay.
All I'm doing at this point is feeling you out for what you want me to draft for the next round of amendments.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead and make sure that that ends up on there because I think it's worthwhile following the, following the same procedure that's used by the county when they need to fill a vacancy should the decision result in a tie. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
You, Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Dill?
Could, I, I don't know if I can address Councilmember Kennedy, but I just wanted to remind, somebody to remind me what we said we would do in, in case of a tie. I don't remember.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
What, what was, the process that you use is the, the decision is made by a lot drawing. Basically, you put the two names in a bowl or whatever, and the clerk would draw the, the winning candidate's name.
Attorney Hamamay, go ahead.
I, I actually think this is a good time, if it's okay with you guys, to talk about that because I tried to find other charters and how it's addressed in other communities to get a better feel for what the general consensus is. So just a little bit of background. We have a section under elections that if there is a tie vote in an election, there's reference to statute and, and it's laid out under the election law. It's MCL 168.851 for those that are interested. And that lays out the process that if there's a tie and it kind of goes through the whole determination by lots. And that's literally pieces of paper and you're drawing and deciding who's going to be the person that's appointed. So also in our charter, we talk about filling vacancies for city council. And if there is a tie in city council's appointment of a vacancy is really where I think Councilmember Kennedy's concern is.
That's right.
Leaving the part of the elections alone, we're referencing state law. We're good to go. What Councilmember Kennedy is considering is that right now, the way the charter reads is that if there is a vacancy in the elective office position, it has, the majority of city council has to appoint to fill that vacancy. Well, the problem is if you're a seven-member board, if you have a vacancy, six-member board, if it's lit, what do you do then? Right now, it's vague in our charter. It doesn't say one way or another. I've looked at a number of other charters. It's also vague in a number of other city charters. I presume, and I could be wrong, I presume the reason is it kind of gives you opportunities at that point to figure out a way and/or force a decision by city council. I also found just a little bit more food for thought. For example, the city of Wicksum copied what the election law says for townships. So the election law, actually, it's like a big general set of laws, but then it gets specific for cities, villages, villages and townships. Under the specific election law for townships, it actually specifically says what to do if there's a tie when filling a vacancy on a township board. And it says that if you can't decide if there's a tie, if nobody is selected within 60 days, which is the date allowed, you have to go to a special election. Now, that's what the election law says as it relates to townships. It does not say that as it relates to cities. But why am I telling you this? I'm telling you this because I noticed some other communities copied that law. And the reason that's maybe not a bad idea is because it has case law. It's been, it's been in the law. It's been challenged. It's been upheld. And there's clear direction on how to do it. I can't find anything that says that you can't come up with any way you want to come up with. So I can't necessarily find anything that says to do it the way Councilmember Kennedy is suggesting is a bad way. I'm just outlining what I've noticed when I'm looking at other charters and the election law.
And Attorney Hamamay, I'm, I'm good with that. I just don't want it left in, you know, And Attorney Hamamay, I'm, I'm good with that. I just don't want it left in, you know, in neutral here. I mean, there has to be some point at which you can come to some point of conclusion on who's going to fill that vacancy. If it's holding a next special election, whatever it is, that's great. But as opposed to, you know, you've got three people want this person, three people want this person. And you're caught between a rock and a hard place. We need to, we need to field a full seven body council. So as long as there's a way to resolve it, that's all I'm looking for. Doesn't matter how we do it. If it's by election, that's great. If it's drawing a name out of a hat, that's fine too. I just don't want it left without some point of conclusion. That's all I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Kibble, you had something to add?
The, the problem lies though is if we have to go through all the mechanisms to get an election, we are without that seventh person for quite a long time. The, the beauty of having the draw is it's, it's settled that night. So I, I don't have a problem with that. I, I don't think that anything cataclysmic would end up coming from, you know, the two people that were holding the bag for having the seat. I, I can't imagine that it would be a destruction to our ability to come to good consensus. So I, I did want to ask Attorney Hamamay a question. We, we keep getting all these attorney client privilege confidential kind of communications. I don't see anything in here that would suggest that there is something that the public wouldn't end up having the ability to, to glean. I don't get it.
Well, I mean, it goes to the root of the attorney client privilege. We should be able to communicate without fear that somebody's going to get their hands on that and use that against us. So just for example, if the whole, I mean, I don't know about anything right now, but for example, the charter issue, the quorum issue, I didn't want that to be public information. All the opinion I gave you, the risks I laid out in my letter because somebody could then just challenge a decision that's made if something came up. I don't want that to happen until I fix it. And as your attorney, we should be able to have that kind of communication without fear that it's going to come back and bite us.
I, I agree. When there are vulnerabilities, I think that it's often just boilerplate. You do it because that's what you do. So.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, couple of points. Uh, there's not much attorney client confidentiality because we're talking about it in open in an open forum tonight. So I, I just don't get it either. Uh, additionally, I think the reason that people have used up, uh, picking lots or a name out of a hat is because you are looking for a statistically random choice and not a choice that's biased towards one candidate or another. So I think that is why the lot way of resolving a tie has been used in the past because it doesn't permit either side to claim a victory or to introduce bias in the process of the election of the individual. I also have looked at case law in this area and I would agree with the city attorney that the reason special elections are approved, and if you look at some of the legislative history on that particular statute, it's because it's a pro voter solution. It is allowing the voters to make the decision and not just a, a couple of people in your governing body. And that's how you would hope that most of our decisions are made. That are important is that the voters will make that decision. So I'm not opposed to a special election because I'm very voter prone, and I think that's a little bit closer to allowing voters to decide who is going to represent them rather than three people on a city council or four people. So. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Did anyone have anything else to add? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I just wanted to suggest that it's actually six people on council that would be making that decision to go to the, the draw. It's not three, it's not four, it's six people couldn't come to a consensus. So the draw takes place.
With three people.
What do you mean, three people?
Three people are the draw. Okay. If you, if you had a majority, you'd have four people approving and picking the person. And then you have no reason to go to a special election or go to a draw. You would have a consensus.
All right. So that's great. We, we've identified one that we would like to see brought back to us. Does anyone have anything else that we need to focus on here?
Actually, V Mayor, is the city council is okay with drafting the other four? So we would have five that would come before council? Or do you want to limit, limit that number? Because I know the city attorney would probably want to make a recommendation of how many we should actually probably be bringing before the voters at any given time.
Correct. Go ahead, City Attorney Hamamay.
Just if, if I can, just a few points. I would like to get maybe just a general consensus of the council members if they would prefer to follow the election law for townships and do the special election if it can't be decided or the lot question because I pre, I'm anticipating the next time this comes before you, there will be proposed language. And I don't want to spend the time drafting that language if you hadn't really decided which way you want to go. The second thing I wanted to point out in my letter, I highlighted the four items that we all talked about last year. But then there were conversations about the election and then there was a, you know, the conflict of interest concern that Councilmember Kurtzwell brought up as well. So I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the remaining two that I outlined in my letter. That would be the election one we already spoke of and the conflict of interest provision. And just to remind you of that conflict of interest provision, currently our charter requires unanimous consent of the entire council in order to not vote on a matter, even if you have a conflict of interest. And I think that what we talked about was potentially removing that requirement of unanimous consent and simply stating something along the lines of unless you have a conflict of interest recognized by law, you have to vote on every matter before you. And that might fix the concern that Councilmember Kurtzwell had, but still keep to the true intent of the conflict of interest provision in the charter.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
I, I think the real narrow issue is, uh, and to use the example is let's say I have a client. There's a conflict of interest with respect to a client that I represent. And council says, too bad about your conflict of interest. You're going to have to vote. Well, council cannot control the code of professional conduct that, that I hold my license under. I mean, that, that would be challenged immediately in the courts. I'm just letting you know. So that's why council, the council needs to understand that some of these conflicts may affect somebody's license. They could be a builder, they could be something. And for me professionally, an accountant, I mean, you may have a CPA that sits on council someday. And that CPA may have information about somebody that comes before council and that would set up a conflict of interest. You, you, you can't mess with people's licenses. So that, that's why I have argued for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. City Attorney Hamamay?
Just to sum up then, it sounds like we are at six questions, which could be problematic because of the length of the ballot. So maybe if we could prioritize them, I'll come up with the language for all six. We'll see how it flushes out. And then if we need to push some over to the following year, then we could do that and you could make that decision at that time.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
And Attorney Hamamay was looking for some direction on the filling the vacancy along with Councilmember Kibble. I'm good with doing it by lot. If the voters aren't happy with the individual that's selected the next election, they can vote the individual out because he only fills the term until the term expires for the person for whom he's, he's filling it. As opposed to accruing the, the cost for a special election.
Councilmember Dill?
I'm kind of split, but I think I'd rather go with the special election. I, I think it just seems it just seems so arbitrary to do a lot draw. So if I, I could, I, I mean, I'm not going to, you know, it's not the hill I'm going to die on, but I'd prefer the special election.
Councilmember Kibble?
I can go either way. The the problem will be if there's enough conflict to not be able to come to a consensus on somebody being appointed to that seat. Chances are there's going to be an awful lot of contention on a number of issues that go forward until that seat is filled. So if we're going to drag it out until we've got an election, you better buckle up. So.
I can see that.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
I, I think the better reasoning is that this council is working pretty good. And if something happens, it happens. I don't think anybody is going to act to, you know, disrupt the momentum that, that this council has. And you only have until the fall. So I, I really don't foresee anything disastrous happening between the personalities on this council between now and November or, or waiting another year. I mean, you've gone this far and I just don't see where there's been the problem, but I just don't see it.
Councilmember Walton, then I'm coming to you, Councilmember Kibble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I agree with Councilmember Dill. I think that it's not the mountain we need to die on tonight, but I more or less would rather have the election than put names in a hat.
Councilmember Kibble?
Uh, the concern isn't about this council. The concern is about how the charter looks at this issue anytime that it comes up irrespective of who's on council. We're trying to end up fixing something that doesn't exist now. So uh, this isn't the personality thing about who's on here right now. We're just trying to find a solve.
You know, you, I, I love to just sit here and hope this never happens really, but it's good that we have a solution for it in case it does. At this point in time, City Attorney Hamamay, don't throw a brick across at the table, man, but let's write them for both and let's settle down and take care of it down the road. So um, that's where I'm at with it. So I'm sorry that we couldn't give you a, a tighter lane of direction, but that's just where I'm at with it. So um, I, 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 I'm kind of on the fence on the whole thing too. I, you know, it's something we don't need to figure out tonight. I'm sorry. So, but I will entertain any motion to give the direction this evening. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Um, I move that the city attorney begin preparing a draft to amendments to the charter as outlined in her memo to city council, including the two areas that were mentioned during the public debate. And that would be filling a vacancy and resolving issues of conflict of interest.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? I know that can get deep, but I'm, I'm glad we got to where we needed to be tonight. Okay. If I could give City Clerk Deaton, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yeah.
Richards?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Pelchat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to the budget this evening. Does anyone have anything on the budget? Okay. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. And please remember that we have a two minute time.
No one has raised their hand.
All right. At this time, we will close public comment and move on to the manager's report with city manager Zellner.
Uh, go right to the budget. As I mentioned during previous council meetings as well as past manager reports, we needed to schedule our budget meeting within the first full, full week of April. Based upon the responses that I received from the council members, the meeting will be held on Thursday, April 8th. And that will be at 6:00 PM and that will be via Zoom. I've updated council as well as we are moving forward with the annual garage sale permits. We're already getting calls about people wanting to hold them. Our city garage sale will be held April 29th, 30th, May 1st and 2nd. We're recommending not to char, charge again for the garage sale permit. However, wherever we still will ask people to call and register the garage sales with the city to ensure that they do not hold them on a regular basis throughout the summer. The 17th Annual South Line Cleanup is going to be held on Sunday, April 18th from 9:00 AM into 1:00 PM. Uh, upcoming city council agendas, we've talked about the mural ordinances is going to be coming before city council. So we prepare for that. And I can address any questions you'd like regarding the statements that were made regarding during citizen comment earlier in the meeting addressing foster care facility. I can answer direct questions relating to that. Or if you want to make me to make a statement at any time, I can do that chaining to what rights we have with the city and what things are actually held through the state of Michigan.
Uh, Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Um, I would love to hear of the statement, but also I did, you know, given the question that was asked is, is Larry giving us 45 days notice like they were that they are supposed to do? Did that actually happen?
I have not been informed of that. Uh, since those letters come into the city clerk, they may have gone to the planner, but we will check on that.
Anyone else have anything for city manager Zellner this evening? Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I request your permission to address the city attorney. It does pertain to city matters.
Oh, absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I had the pleasure of attending the, the CapCon, you know, conference this week. It was very enlightening. Two issues came up. Uh, and I, I asked the questions because uh, it's bothered me a little bit over the years. And the question to the city attorney is, is that you have somebody that is on city council, is not able to attend a closed session. That individual then, uh, attempts to gain knowledge about what happened in the closed session. Now, I asked that question at, at the conference and the two attorneys, one at Miller Campfield and the other one at Guereluko uh, said, you know, we know that's an issue, but we've never had to deal with it. And so we went through this discussion of how to get it resolved. And I think it's important that we understand, at least from what these attorneys said, that we should probably have a procedure in place as to how an absentee council member can gain knowledge of what went on in a closed meeting. Now, they recommended that council members do not engage in that conversation because for a council member to talk to another member outside of that meeting would be a technical violation of the law. So that's important for everybody to understand is that just because you're in a closed meeting and you are privileged to be in that meeting, that does not mean that you can go outside of that meeting and say, oh, what did you think about what so and so said? Or would it, you can't have those discussions. So their recommendation was rather than getting into oral, he said, she said that maybe you limit the absentee person's ability to gain knowledge of that closed session by reading the minutes. And then that way, um, nobody has to discuss. You don't, I, I don't know, but that was one of their suggestions. But they admitted that it was, um, an interesting area that they did not have an answer to. So, yeah, I'll just address that.
Attorney Hamamay, go ahead.
Uh, two points. Um, I have always been of the opinion you cannot discuss what was discussed in closed session with anybody, even if it's a council member who wasn't there.
Exactly. Yep.
An alternative to that, um, is not meeting minutes because you're not taking meeting minutes in closed session. You're taking very, very, very basic, who was there, what time you went in, what time you came out, what the topic was. You're not taking detailed meeting minutes in closed session.
That's not what the statute says. I think the statute says that you could take minutes. And the city clerk needs to hold onto them for a year and one day. And the only people permitted access are those that sit on council. Or, or, or they get released under a court order.
So I, I haven't looked at the statute recently, so I'm not gonna swear on a stack of bibles. But I'm fairly confident it's very skeletal. You don't put the substance in meeting minutes. Yes, you have to take them. You have to say who was in the meeting, when you went in, when you came out, and what the topic was. That's, that's all I've known for the last 20 years. If something's changed, I don't know that. And I can look, but that's kind of how, how I've always operated. But let me also add, as far as what you can do to remedy the problem, and we've, we've dealt with this over the course of, you know, my 20 years as a municipal attorney. I can have a conversation about the topic, which would still be confidential without disclosing what was said in closed session, what this person said, what the discussion was about, what I could share the legal issues with that individual and bring them kind of up to speed on the legal aspect.
So the process then is if somebody is absent and wants to get a framework of what happened, the, the manner in which they go is through the city attorney.
Well, obviously through the mayor. But, but I, I can bring them up to speed as from a legal standpoint. I would not be able to tell that person what was said in closed session, what everyone's opinions were, what was shared. But the, the substance of the discussion, the issue that you went into closed session for, I would be able to.
Well, the mayor can't have that discussion either. He needs to say.
I just mean, I just mean you can't call me directly. I have a hierarchy.
Right, because you have to get approval. I, I get that. So, okay, so I just want to make sure I, I get it. So if that ever happens, the person who was absent contacts the mayor, says I would like just a skeletal framework. Mayor then makes the yes or no, up or down to give approval. He says to Lisa, FYI, please expect a phone call from blah, blah, blah. Okay, that, that's important to get that resolved, I think. The next issue dealt with virtual meetings, and I did not know this. The whole issue of virtual meetings came up, and it came up with President, I'm in the city of South Lyon. Or President, I'm in the city of Elk Rapids, whatever. So the question came up, do I have to be in the jurisdiction in which I was elected? And I was shocked to find out, no. I do not. So I can be in Kentucky and participating in this meeting. I just have to say, the statute only requires that I state where I am at, at the time I'm attending the meeting. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
I did not know that. Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Actually, I think the objective was that you should predominantly be in your jurisdiction, but it doesn't hold you to that. Paul, I was just kind of curious, when we had the meeting with planning, I was wondering if you have a sense of when those changes will be written down and we can actually have a, a view of how they, whatever language was changed. We could take a look at it?
I will, I'll let you know on my mayor's report by Friday. I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. And I was wondering, I, I see the zoning board had a couple of issues that had taken place last Thursday. Could you pass along the outcome of Susie's and Heinernan and Carol's request for the variances that they were looking for?
The first one for Susie's did pass. The variance was granted. And the second one, they tabled it to request additional information. So that is going to be coming back before the zoning board of appeals. I believe it's on April 15th.
Okay, it was kind of, that one kind of struck me in that Kelly was pretty adamant in our going through with the planning commission, the idea that a, a commercial location wouldn't have access directly to a, a city thoroughfare. So it's weird timing. All right, thank you.
Anyone else have anything for City Manager Zelnik this evening? All right, thank you, Paul. We're gonna move on to council comments and we're gonna go to Councilmember Walton first this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I couldn't get myself off, on mute there for a moment. Thank you for calling on me. First, I will disclose that I will probably be dropping off the call about 9:00 PM, so just so everyone is aware. I do appreciate your helping me out with that. I just want to thank Sophia Santana for coming tonight. It takes a lot to stand up and make public comments, no matter what the forum is. So we do appreciate your input and letting us know your thoughts on the subject. And I also want to say congratulations to a, a young man named James. He's working on his Eagle Scout project here in the city of South Lyon. He's making cat shelters for furry friends, cat rescue. You can contact them if you are interested in one of those outdoor shelters. I know that many people put those out in the winter. However, he is making them now as part of his Eagle Scout project. Maybe you could get one and get on the list for next year. So that's all I have for tonight, and everyone have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Dill?
I actually don't even have anything tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, welcome to spring, everybody. This is the day we've all been waiting for. Spring is here. If you need your garden tools sharpened, stop by and see my friends at Peter's True Value right in downtown South Lyon. I just picked up my sharpened tools last weekend, have not stopped using them. Also, Sean, let me know that flowers will be in at value beginning May 1st. Also, the Cultural Arts Commission is planning an absolutely incredible month of April dedicated to poets. Don't want to say anything else, but Josie and Joe are doing an incredible job. There's gonna be some poets that are gonna be publishing their work throughout the city of South Lyon with international reputations. This is pretty, pretty outstanding. The city is getting this. So real happy about that. Also, like Steve, I have also been active in assisting people to obtain the vaccine. And I have been involved since January, only with the Moderna and with the Pfizer vaccine. And I want to let everybody know that Ford Field will be starting their operation beginning March 24th in a couple of days from 8:00 AM to 8:30 PM, seven days a week for eight weeks. Under a government vaccine pilot program, the Ford Field Clinic has the capacity to administer close to 6,000 vaccines a day. I am supporting that and assisting people to get signed up. Support for this clinic comes from FEMA, from Wayne County, from Ford Field, from Meyer, from the Detroit Lions, and the most important, the Ford Health System. So this is gonna be a clinic where you're gonna go in, you're gonna get your shot. There are gonna be plenty of doctors that are gonna be available through this whole process. So if you have problems after your vaccine, you will be treated. This is, this is absolutely an incredible event and it's a pilot program in the country. So I'm pretty proud to be affiliated and associated with assisting on getting people to sign up. But you can go online and you can go to clinic.meyer.com/register/CL2021. Or you can text andCOVID to 75049. Or you can contact the Michigan Department Health and Human Services at 888-535-6136. And then press number one. You're a senior and you need assistance in getting to Ford Field, please contact me. The vaccine that's gonna be provided is Pfizer. So thank you, and Steve, thank you for your efforts on this front too. Good night, everybody. See you in the garden.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kennedy?
Just to pick up on Councilmember Kurtzwell, thank you, Maggie. Did you want to provide contact information so that people can get in touch with you? Or how do you recommend they do that? A lot of those seniors don't have access to computers. I didn't know if you wanted to provide a phone number or something else there? So they can partake in that offer?
Yep, you can call me, 248-446-9664.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy for, thank you, thank you.
You bet. So tonight, I just want to again remind everyone, just reiterate what Paul brought up about the upcoming annual Creek Cleanup Event in South Lyon. The event's scheduled to be held on Sunday, April 18th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Everybody should meet at the Michigan Seamen's Two Parking Lot, 400 McMon Street. So dress warm, bring a pair of boots, gloves, and we'll see you that Sunday morning, April 18th to help clean the waterways and the surrounding areas in South Lyon. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Kibble?
I'm looking forward to find out exactly what takes place at 110 Detroit Street. We've caught a reprieve. The building, it's, it's remarkable how, how much better it looks just having gotten all the debris and things around it taken out of there. You can actually get a better sense that there is some really high-quality architectural features there that have clearly fallen into deep disrepair. But the, the promise of that place at least has a chance to be brought back into, into some life and, and could end up being something that hosts an interesting, I'm hoping a commercial location rather than a residential, but I thought that was really cool and that coupled with 106, we might end up having two really nice retail or even restaurant locations coming up. So I, I'm, I'm grateful and I'm glad that we helped our, the, actually the owners speak to the fire by making sure that we took care of the dangerous buildings thing. We had a hammer in the event that they didn't comply and, but this is a much, a much better result if we can get something that is sustained in that location. So, well, that's really all I have. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Richards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just mention a few little things here. I agree with Councilmember Kibble above 110 Detroit Street. It's my hope that the place can be, become a counseling center. Not really suitable as a home, and at, at this time, the property owner hasn't pulled the permit, but he doesn't have to, as long as he's just doing cleanup around the property and inside the walls. But also, I think it needs to be mentioned, and I'm gonna mention it, okay? That footing that sits out in the backyard on the south side on the inside of the fence, that's an historic site, okay? That was the site of Burnham's of, of the garage for horse showing once upon a time. And prior to that, it was the site of the second schoolhouse in the city of South Lyon in the 1840s, okay? And that's all I have to say. I want 10. The next item is, as a senior, I've sort of homebound, I guess, I've, I've tried to get a, the testing for the COVID shot testing, and I haven't been able to get it myself, and I'm sure other seniors must see, feel the same frustration. I've talked to my pharmacy and I can't come in there and, and register for the test in person. It's gotta be done online. And they can't help you with it. You gotta figure it all out. So there's, there's gotta be some avenues available for seniors or anybody else to, if they want to sign up for the test, they can do so. Just it's eluded me so far. And thirdly and lastly, I hope we haven't created a point of confusion about garage sales. If someone, unless I'm wrong, it appears to me that someone wants to sign up with the city and let them know we're gonna have, they're going to participate in the citywide garage sale in April through May, the first four days there, that they are still eligible for one more permit at regular price during the year. Okay, and if they don't sign up for citywide, they're eligible for two permits at full price, which is only $5, I think, during the course of the summer. I think there's a confusion amongst people on that. If I'm not wrong about that, okay? That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Richards. I just have a quick thing. I want to congratulate the girls and boys east basketball teams in winning the Lakes Valley Conference this year. Districts are, I believe, beginning this week. So good luck to all the South Lyon teams out there finishing up that winter sports season that we're all very happy we got in. And so, you know, Councilmember Kurtzwell touched on it, the weather's breaking. Been a rough winter for a lot of us, you know, boil up the baseball mitt, let's get it outside, let's throw some things around. And, you know, let's, let's take in this nice weather we've all been waiting for. So tonight I will not be looking for, I motion to adjourn, I will be looking for, I will be entertaining a motion to go into closed session this evening. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Yes, I move to go into a closed session pursuant to Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act to discuss pending litigation in Alexander's versus City of South Lyon.
I'll second.
Thank you. City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote on that?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Pellchat?
Yes. Oh, City Attorney Hamamé, I know what you're gonna say. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. For anyone that is here from the public, please remember that when we come out of closed session, if we go to take any action, you will be allowed back into the room. Is there anything else you'd like me to add? Okay, thank you. Forgive me.
Okay, I'm going to pause the recording. And right now, there is nobody else listed as an attendee.
All right. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Attorney Hamamé, how do you want to phrase the motion?
It would be a motion to proceed as discussed in closed session.
I'll make a motion, proceed as discussed in closed session.
We have a motion in a second. City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Pellchat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Have a great night, all.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you all. Have a great night. Thanks.
Thank you.